Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the special board meeting of the Board of Trustees. Today is Monday, April 24th. The time is now 6:34 PM. Trustee Brown?
Present.
Trustee House?
Present.
Trustee Norwood? Trustee Steve?
Present.
Trustee Holmes is absent. Trustee Belcher?
Here.
We have a quorum. In absence of the mayor, I would like to motion to the Board to appoint a Mayor Pro Tem for today's evening's, this evening's meeting.
I make a motion to appoint Mayor Pro Tem, trustee Jay House.
Second. Trustee Brown. Okay. Trustee Brown? I'm calling you on the order.
Oh, okay.
Trustee House?
Aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Steve?
Aye.
Trustee Hol- oops, and trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Thank you, Clerk Key. Want to thank everybody that's present today. I'm not sure what the closest direction. We have to start with Pledge of Allegiance, and who knows the closest direction for a flag that we can face? Right over there. So I ask if everybody is standing up facing that way towards the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll ask if trustee Belcher would lead us to prayer, please, in all seats, please?
Have any thoughts? Thank you for allowing us to join tonight. Let us be able to conduct the business as hand has hand for the community. Let us be able to move forward and be productive in this gathering for our citizens and all of them. Amen.
Amen. Amen.
Amen.
Yes.
So, we would like to thank everybody that's able to be, that's able to be in attendance today, and those who have come. Just a couple of comments, just so we can put on the record of the reason for this meeting, and I want to acknowledge that this board information has been sent to all board members, to the mayor. The clerk has also distributed this to all six current trustees and all related parties. So this is an open meeting with the intent that this be held in a similar fashion to what a normal board meeting would be. The meeting has been conducted here at Dalton's Park District because of previous meetings having difficulties. No board member has the key or access to Village Hall, and in previous times, we've not gained, had, received access to the meeting. So instead of going through a cycle of continuing to try to gain access and delay a meeting, we've had three meetings that have been missed. So we wanted to make sure we had a platform where residents can come, make their comments. The board can conduct any business that's possible to move forward, and then we can, most importantly, hear from the community. So having made those comments, I'll pause to see if any other board members have comments or thoughts that they wanted to add on the calling of this special board.
Yes. Have you recognized?
Trustee Steve?
I want to say this is officially my last meeting. It was been a pleasure to serve for four years, to do, try to do the right things, never be compromised in a way. I hope and pray that Brother Stan Brown will do the right thing when he get up here. So this is officially my last meeting. Everyone knows that last year I did my multiple sclerosis walk, MS walk, for the South suburbs, and that will be held again May 13th, the next day of the conference with the mayor. So if you know anybody has suffered from autoimmune disease, MS, should come out. It's a family event. It was well attended last year. It's a good event this year. The MS Society helps me out. So that's May 13th, right in the Bay Room, that we're going to have the MS walk. On the, on the, on the reality of why we're here, because we've had three canceled board meetings. We don't have the, you'll hear tonight, we don't have the bills. We still don't have the credit card receipts. We don't have credit card statements. The amount of monies being spent without no board approval, without checks and balances is unacceptable. We tried to have a board meeting a few years, a year or so ago. They locked the door and threatened to, threatened to arrest us. Then one time, we had to call special board meeting, and we had to get in there. They cut all the lights off on us, and then told the fire department to come in, and they had a phony, false fire alarm. So we wouldn't hold a meeting. These are the real things that has happened. So we had to have our own meeting here because they won't let us do a board meeting at the, at the Village Hall, and then they cancel any board meeting without no, if they don't, if the mayor don't want to handle it, she don't want to have, she won't have the meeting. Still businesses has to be handled. We still don't have the bills. We still don't know what's being spent with taxpayers' money. That's our job to look over the money. So that's why we're here. We have to call these special board meetings because they get canceled. Our board meetings get canceled. Then they won't put this stuff of the, of the trustees on the agenda. The stuff that we want to push, that we want the stuff to put in place to have checks and balances, they won't even put on the agenda. So we have to have special board meetings to even pass our stuff. And then when she vetoes it, the process of government, you override the veto. She won't put that on the agenda. So that's why we have to have these special board meetings. But again, it's been a pleasure serving everyone. I'm still going to be here. I urge everybody to look at our Dalton Trustee YouTube page, our Facebook page, our email blast, our text message blast, to see what's going on with the trustees and the stuff that we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Steve. Any additional comments, general announcements that the board may have? Okay, trustee Norwood?
Thank you. I do have a few events from Dalton Park. We've been making an effort to partner with our park district. We have a few dates. May the 5th, at seven, from 7:00 to 10:00 PM, there's going to be a Mother's Day papa party. On May the 7th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, they're going to have some music in the park. On May 17th, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, they're going to have Wine Down Wednesdays. And on May 27th, from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM, they're going to have a food truck festival. All of these events will be held in our main park at 721 English Street, right here in our great Village of Dalton. And I would just also like to add that as a board, I'd just like to thank all of our residents, for all the patience, all the support in regards to what we're trying to do. There's two things that's lacking from the administration, and that's communication and compromise. So we're just hoping that we can get some communication and compromise at some point so that we could move together as a team and do what's right for the village. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Thanks, trustee Norwood.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Oh, yes. Trustee Brown?
Just wanted to say good evening, residents. Want to say thank you, thank you, thank you to those who voted for me and those who didn't. I'm still going to continue to do a job. It might not be the ones that people think I should be doing, but I am out in the community, working with residents. I'm going to continue to do that job, and you will see more of me, because you didn't see, a lot of people said they didn't see me, but you definitely will see more of me. I don't have a committee, so again, I'm going to do my own thing. I don't need a committee to get out here and work for the residents. So you definitely will see more trustee Brown out here in the community. Again, thank you all for your love and support. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Brown. Okay, any additional comments? I would like to acknowledge, we have Mrs. Creighton. There's a wonderful Mother's Day event that she and her team are promoting. So Ms. Creighton, would you, if you don't mind, just kind of speak to the event and invite all residents?
Good evening, everyone. For this, in a wait for minutes, trying to get myself back to being myself, trying to find out who I am. To all the residents here, I'd like to invite you all to our Mother's Day event. Charter's Youth Commission will be having its 10th annual Mother's Day event here at the Bay Room on May 14th, Mother's Day. So come on out and have an awesome celebration and fellowship with us. We welcome you to come and eat your heart out and to enjoy the festivities. We will have a balloon release for those mothers and those special individuals that are no longer here with us to celebrate that event. So once again, thank you. Thank you, trustee Brown. Thank you. Trustee Steve, we thank you for your service, and we pray that there about the unity in the community. That means that you don't have to agree with me, but I have to respect you as the leadership. I have to respect you as an individual that's in charge. I elected you to be diligent over the financial issues in this village. You are to look out for me and all the residents here in the Village of Dalton. I thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Creighton. And I would like to say the Board of Trustees had purchased a block of tickets. So for those that, that may not be, it may not be feasible to naturally get the ticket, please reach out to any trustees that we work with to make sure that everybody has a festive and great Mother's Day, because we want to make sure that Charter's Youth Commission, who always does a fantastic event. So we want to take that event and make, and make it the next level this year. So having said that, we're going to go dive into our agenda. First on the agenda is old business. We listed our corporate bills down here in hopes that we would have the list of corporate bills to be presented. As it stands now, nor, the general process, we would have the bills on the first, on our first monthly meeting, which would have been, I would say, May 3rd?
April 3rd.
April 3rd. As of today, we have not received those corporate bills. We, I have had some conversations with both the prosecuting counsel that is generally present at our normal meetings, which is Attorney Delgado, as well as legislative counsel, in efforts to try to get that information so that we can pass, we can pay these, we can approve the bills that are within our budget. As of today, we still have not gotten that. So the next phase is trying to determine when a meeting will be held, that the bills will be presented, or we have to determine with our legislative counsel if we need to go into court to do that. We loathe or try to not add any additional legal costs, so that's a decision that will be made within the course of this week. If we're able to have a meeting next week, then we may not need to, but at this moment, myself and any board members has received information. When we talk about corporate bills, the only bill to my knowledge is being paid at this time is the, is our payroll. So employees are being paid, but any other, there are no other bills are being paid, which is the insurance, light bills, gas bills, ambulatory services, accounting services. Anything that is not payroll at this moment has not been paid since our most, since the March, the first meeting in March. So that's part of the critical nature that we felt necessary to have a conversation, make sure residents know what's happening and what our attempted next steps are. So not, without having corporate bills, I'm going to, I'll make an official motion, just so we have it on the record. My motion is that we table corporate bills until we receive the information necessary to do an approval. So that's my motion. I'll ask for a second?
Second.
Okay, hearing motion and second. Any discussion?
I would just like to say, Mayor Pro Tem?
Oh, yes, trustee Belcher?
I would just like to say, April 16th, I did send a formal email to the mayor, to the village administrator, to both attorneys, asking for a copy of the warrant list, just so that we would have, I would have a paper trail that this was the one, that this is something that I am looking for, and to this day, there has still been no response. April 14th, oh, I believe it was April 12th, I want to be accurate because I'm sure they're quoting back on it. I contacted the village administrator in reference to us having a committee of a whole meeting or a board meeting before the April 17th schedule meeting. He said that he would get back to me, and today is April 24th, and I still have not got it yet. So I just like to make sure that that's on record.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments from the board? Trustee Norwood?
One day last week, I spoke with the mayor regarding the bill, and she stated that, she told me to come, I can come to the village to pick up the warrant list. But when I got there, she stated that we would no longer have a warrant list provided to us because we weren't having a meeting last Monday. So she said she wouldn't provide the warrant list because we didn't have a meeting, and that was our last communication regarding it.
Any additional comments, board? Okay, hearing none. The motion, the motion is second to table. I'll ask if Clerk Key will have to do a roll call, please?
Sure. Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee House?
Aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Steve?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Motion passed to table corporate bills.
Okay, thank you. Next thing we have on our agenda, approval of the meeting minutes from February 6, 2023. A special board meeting that was in everybody's packet. I'll ask for a motion to approve the special board meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve the special board meeting minutes for February 6, 2023.
Motion, trustee Belcher, is there a second?
Aye.
Trustee Brown, with a second. Any discussion? Oh, yes, Clerk Key?
I'd just like to comment that I did submit these minutes for the last regular board meeting, and unfortunately, this particular set of meetings, minutes were not on the agenda, and no one could provide me with a reason why they were not on there. So I received approval for the other two minutes, but not this. So I put this on the agenda today so that we can stay current with our minutes being approved. So that is the reason this is on today's agenda.
Okay, thank you for that comment, Clerk Key. Any additional comments? Hearing none. Clerk Key for a roll call, please?
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee House?
Aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Steve?
Aye.
And trustee Belcher? Motion passed.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is a discussion topic from trustee Belcher. So I yield the floor to trustee Belcher. Please elaborate.
Good evening, everyone. So the reason we put the discussion of the cleanup of the village fountain and bringing back Steppin' in the Fountain is when Steppin' in the Fountain was going on, on Park Street, it bought out the community. It was a community cohesion list. There was no, no issues there. It was something where during the summer, weekly, the communities would be able to get involved and actually come out, talk, and gather amongst each other. I'm asking for a reason to put this on there, and we're about to be 1830th, so we'll be seeking our fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget, and I would want this to be part of the budget because it will be some monies that need to be put aside to have this done. We do have all these other unapproved things that's going on, or so-called improvements that's happening, and I just think that we have a beautiful fountain over there that is not being put to use, and I'm seeking, and this is only for discussion right now, that we look into cleaning it up and possibly starting Steppin' with the fountain, back at the fountain, June of 2023. So this is only a discussion item that I wanted to put onto the meeting, and then at our next board meeting, hopefully, is something that we can talk about, so it can be included in our fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget to move forward. That's all.
Any comments, feedback, or other board members? Yeah, just my brief comment that I do. I think Steppin' at the Fountain was a very well-attended and great initiative. I would be in support of working with trustee Belcher on, on this and identifying what that cost would be, so that we can look to put that into the budget. Hearing no additional comments, we'll move on to item number B, another item for discussion. Trustee Belcher?
Trustee, I'll let the one that can be in it. And most of my items are only for discussion because, as I stated, I did contact the village administrator because I was seeking for this information to be on a committee of a whole meeting. The last financial credit card statement we received came in January, and that was for the December, ending December 22nd, 2022 credit card, which our credit card limit currently right now is $50,000. When we first got into office, well, I'm going to say when I first got into office, which is 2021, I believe it was at $25,000. An increase was asked without board approval of $50,000. We noticed it after receiving the statement. We did receive an email stating that an increase of $200,000 was trying to be had. That increase did not be approved, but after considerably going over these credit card bills, well, we do get them because, as I stated, this is December, so that means it's January, February, March, we still have not got the last three credit card bills. I did send an email to the finance director, which I have not received any type of response. We need to try to get a hold of how we can monitor these credit cards. And when I say monitor the credit cards, when you look on the credit card bills, there's a substantial amount of Amazon, 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 Amazon. We have no idea what's being paid at Amazon, what's being purchased at Amazon. This particular bill roughly has over, I believe, $1,700 worth of food. We eat at Photo Day Child, we eat at Italian Fiesta, we eat at all these places. And I understand that as a municipality, you do do employee appreciation, but at what point in our budget that we have that this has exceeded the budget tremendously? And right now, I just think that the credit card is being abused. I asked before for us to give a prepaid card, $10,000, that's all you need. If there's anything else, it needs to, I just think right now, we can't monitor this, this credit card, and since it's paid through ACH every month directly out of our account, that means it just replenishes every month, $50,000. It's constantly being replenished. And now I see that some bills are being paid on the credit card because they don't want them to come through in front of the board to get it approved. So I think that the credit card is now being abused.
Who has the credit card?
The mayor. So at this time, I know we spoke to legal counsel about it, and it said that we had to go through legal counsel for everything, because the first thing they're going to say, the trustees got all these legal bills. But at what point do you tie somebody's hand to say enough is enough, and it has to stop? Nobody's saying, don't pay the bills, or don't, you know, do, do things in moderation. But at this point, I feel it's being abused. And so I'm seeking, once we do get some type of legal clarification, to either have a limit that has been reduced to the credit card, or to have something in place where this credit card can be monitored. And it, we're not, I'm saying, I'm not trying to babysit nobody. I can barely babysit my, my own kids. But at this point, this is still. At this point, this is still, it's becoming ridiculous that $50,000 a month is being spent, because every month, it goes between $43,000 and $50,000 is actually being used.
I'll comment, then I'll, then I'll go ahead to other trustees. So maybe to kind of elaborate or maybe expand a little bit, current policy right now, well, we, we did pass an ordinance on February 6th to reduce the credit card limit down to $20,000. That case, that is also being tied to one of the court cases about the signs on the bank account of those credit card limits. So that, that is still pending legal decision on what direction that could, the, what authority the board has to make that decision. We feel strongly that the board does by majority vote have the right to make that vote. It was properly vetoed by the mayor's office, and it was properly overridden by the Board of Trustees as well. So all those steps have happened, and now it's more of a legal matter. I do think it's disappointing that we would go through these steps, that we have to involve the courts to get some remedy or resolution. Previous administration had the limit, as trustee Belcher mentioned, of $25,000. Previous administration rarely went over $5,000 in spending. The max I've seen on that credit card was $12,000 in a month. So this spending that's on this card is, is extremely different than the past administration. Not that one administration would have to mirror the other one, but there needs to be, as mentioned, some checks, some balances. Company, or corporate policy for Village of Dalton, purchases over $5,000 should be brought before the Board of Trustees, just to make sure that it stays within the budgeted amount, and it's reasonable. So we do have, there are current policies in place, and the issue that we run into on many cases is making sure that there is enforcement, and if there's no enforcement of the ordinance, then it ends up in court, and that's where a lot of time is being tied up with legal fees and legal matters. But I wanted to bring that out as mention of what the policies are, where my understanding of the policies are, and I'm in agreement with trustee Belcher on making sure we do the right things to keep within the budget and keep fiscally sound. With that, I yield. I think trustee Steve, you had a comment?
Yeah. From my understanding, there was still, well, I think $110,000 worth of unexplainable spending that we still haven't got the receipts for?
Yeah, so there were, in our previous, in the previous four board meetings, when we get to the portion of corporate bills that has the credit card statements, the motion has been, we, we've made a motion that we approve all bills that has a proper receipt. The reason we make that motion is we have, we have two emails from our accounting firm that show $110,000 worth of spending that there, where that does not have a receipt. Verbally, in those meetings, the comment is made, all the receipts are in there, you just have to go and look. However, the motion is, if you have the receipt, then the bill is, is to be paid. The next month, we come to the meeting, and those same bills reappear on the warrant list, which would give the impression that there is no receipt. We've asked for, we've asked for a detailed list, so I can go into the system and look at it. As of this time, I have not received a list of which items tied to the $110,000, nor have those receipts been viewed by anybody. My comment that I make all the time is, a lot of times, we talk about this has not been presented to the board. I don't need the information. We, I, I like to encourage, we put it on the website. Again, this information belongs to the residents of the Village of Dalton. Everybody should be able to get that in under transparency, that information can be brought. I'll go pull my copy of it from the website. I'm just asking that the information be placed in plain view where everybody can see it. If, if the information is there, I have absolutely no problem with paying a properly spent bill. But if it's improper, we need to sit down and have those hard conversations. But that, I hope that answers your question. You may need some follow-up while I feel rascally. Oh, but trustee Steve?
Yeah, that's, that was the main thing. I know we were asking for that 110, something thousand of unexplained expenses that they, they just refuse to give to us. Every time we ask for it, they refuse to give. That's, that's not no, that's not $10, $20, it's not $100 to buy that, $100,000 of unexplained taxpayers' money that they refuse to give us. So if they're hiding something, something is that right there that you continuously not giving it to us.
That's it. Thanks for your comment, trustee Steve. Any additional board members have comments?
No, you talked about the receipts.
Okay. Trustee Norwood?
Just, I'm in agreeance with trustee Belcher in regards to monitoring, monitoring the credit card expenses for months. I've sent emails saying, hey, can we have a copy? Can we have a copy? Can we have a copy? They don't answer. And I guess this is the biggest part when we say all we are asking for is transparency. It makes it impossible for us to do our jobs when we're not presented with the information. So I'm definitely in agreeance with trustee Belcher in regards to being able to monitor the credit card bills and the spending, so we know what's being spent. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Norwood. Any additional comments? Okay, this is a, I don't know if she was seeking consensus, or I don't believe there was consensus. I think it was a discussion. Yeah, and we do have the ordinance that's pending in court as well.
She's out.
Okay, so trustee Belcher had to step out for a moment, so we are going to modify the agenda slightly until her return. Items C and D were trustee Belcher. We'll next go to item E, which is a discussion regarding a board consensus for an RFP for the engineering firm. I yield to trustee Brown.
Okay. Again, this is for discussion only. She's coming.
Well, we'll go, not, or.
Okay, for discussion only. So this is just a suggestion that we take a look at other engineering firms. This is not to say that we no longer.
This is not to say that we no longer are still dealing with Robertson Engineering. This is just a suggestion, um, that we take a look at other engineering firms. Dalton is in dire need, everybody knows, for funding for infrastructure. Every time it rains on a certain part of Dalton, you see that residents have their items placed out on the curb. I know we spoke about that one time, when we got that $3.5 million about infrastructure. Speaking to Robertson Engineering that time, um, this underground system hasn't been touched in 50-plus years. So again, nothing lasts forever. It's gonna have to be not just a Band-Aid put on it, but go underground and have this work done. I know we're doing the street paving, paving these streets. There's just a Band-Aid put over a hole for that time. And then again, we have to come back and tear that all up again and do repairs. That costs $50,000 per, per street that we pave. But we're definitely not going underground to where the issues are. So again, just a suggestion, and that, like I said, Dalton is in dire need of money for infrastructure. As a whole, Dalton needs money. So this is just only for suggestion that we look at other, uh, engineering firms. Because that, we definitely have a need for infrastructure, for funding.
Any additional comments of the board members?
No.
Okay, I, I'm always in favor of, um, RFPs. I think it just, it just pushes those who are in the position to provide their best, and it gives opportunity for the board to give the comparison. Uh, I think we will want to look at the contract date to make sure that there's no contract conflicts. Um, and if, and assuming that there's no conflict of the contract, I, I would agree with. I think RFPs are good for everybody. Okay, but hearing that, there's no additional comments. Um, trustee Belcher, we'll come back around to you. We had, uh, we went past item C and D, so, uh, see if you have, uh, item number C was listed, uh, for you, please, uh, for yours.
My apologies, um, and I am just so transparent. The reason I stepped out is because I was informed that, um, they were trying to tow my car from in front of the person's house at the corner, so I had to move my car. Um, grant, um, item C that I have on here for discussion, uh, is discussion of grant funding that has been deposited into village accounts. Um, the reason I had this on here for discussion is I'm sure everybody that heard at every meeting that we're getting all of these grants, um, multiple grants, $5 million grants, $300,000 grants, $600,000 grants, and so forth. But, um, only the documentation that was presented to us October 3rd, which the expiration date was September 30th, was the only documentation that we seen that came across the board for these grants. Um, moving forward, and I did speak to previous trustees that had been on the, on the board that, yeah, uh, that have been on the board that the, the information comes in front of the board first before all of these things are done. And so I'm just asking, and it's strictly about transparency, that if there is all of these grants that's coming, how are we, um, able to see them? How are we able to move forward to just be inclusive with what, what we're getting? That's our job as trustees to make sure. So, uh, I know that trustee House and, uh, clerk Key is currently on the bank account now. And, um, it was just some discussion in reference to all of these grants and coming, if those funds had actually been deposited into the account.
Thank you for that. Uh, my comment, and my comments are, I, I'm gonna start being more redundant, which I love doing. But I will, I think my comments are also, um, let's, that things should be put on the website. Transparency dictates that we put things on the website. Um, my interest in, a lot of times we talk about the board or the mayor. My interest is, uh, I, I, I try to remove the board from it. The people deserve it, the information deserves to be there. Uh, I can get all my information the same way that any resident, because I am a resident, uh, can get it. So I have no issue with how it's presented. I, but I do encourage that the information be available for all residents, and then we can start making informed decisions and hopefully in a, in a peaceful, unified manner. Um, any questions or any comments from any additional board members?
I guess, yeah, so my question would be in reference to these grants because this is my, my thought process of this. If it's a grant that comes in, and it's coming to the municipality, and whether it's $500,000 and you say it's for a specific project, how is that money fun- put into, is the money put into the account and then it disperds? Because the reason I'm saying that, and I'm saying this because a lot of residents say, "Well, she said that it's a grant, so why y'all not paying it?" When we see it, we see it as a vendor on the warrant list. So if it's a vendor on the warrant list, then that means that it's coming out of the general funds that we allocate. If it is a grant, then where is the breakdown from the finance committee chair, the finance director? Where is the breakdown to say, "On April such and such, we received this amount of money that's going towards this"? Then it wouldn't be all these questions in reference to the money. I've been set at so many meetings where we're sitting here, the meeting go well until it gets to finance. Everybody knows, as soon as it gets to corporate bills, that's when it go left. Now, you would think that if it's five people that's constantly doing whatever is being done, the finance director be there, the CPA person to be there, everybody that handle the money would be there to be like, "They lying," or "That's not accurate, that's not happening." They make it, their business not to be there. So if it's literally grants that's coming in, we should be able to know, $500,000 came in, and it came in for the doggy park or the ice rink, whatever it is. But as long as it's on the warrant list, it's a bill coming out of our money. And so that's why it goes back to the transparency part of just making sure that if these things are happening, they're done in a more effective way and transparent way that everybody can see, turn it down, that everybody can see how this money is being distributed, and we're not just not paying bills.
Okay, any additional comments?
Yes.
Uh, yes, trustee Steve?
I mean, I think that's, even when trustee House, the finance chair, tried to do a committee meeting, the department heads are told not to show up, so they can't even answer no questions. We don't have to deal with it at a public board meeting. We have committee meetings, but the department heads don't show. So we still can't get no answers. The, the ice skating rink, we still owe that company $105,000.
Freedom.
Tax, taxpayer, taxpayer's money. And so when she said it was paid for, the grant, we haven't seen that grant. And the, the initial stuff was laid out with $10,000. The judge looked at the court cases, the facts of the case, and said, "Oh, we gotta take her off the account and put trustee House and the clerk on the account for transparency." So they can say, "Okay, this is, these are people that seem like they went through it right." So we cannot, moving forward, the department heads should come to every, any committee meeting to answer the questions of the trustees. But they don't feel they have to come because the administration telling them they don't have to come. So moving forward, I hope that I know when trustee House does the transparency, that the department heads will come and answer the questions about how the money's being spent.
Is it in the bad house?
We gotta wait till public comment.
Uh, yeah, sorry, no, we'll answer, we have a public comment at the end. So then if you, if you don't mind, jot down your questions, and then we'll, we'll answer all that public comment.
I just wanna give some additional clarity to what you just said about signatures on the bank account. Uh, the bank account require two signatures always, usually it's the mayor and the clerk. So I'm, I'm, I've always been on the bank account. It's just that the board decided that the senior trustee should be on the bank account so that we can monitor the spending a little bit better. But I've always been on the bank account. So that's nothing new that I'm on there with the trustee now.
I'm gonna say, um, just on the, the, the bank account issue, I didn't wanna be on the bank account. If I'm completely honest, I had, I have, to this day, have no interest in being on the bank account. Uh, we had discussions amongst the board, and after about three months worth of conversation and seeing, and seeing months of checks going through the bank with only one signature and not having the proper two dual signature and checks that were not approved by the board, was when we collectively, um, had some discussions and tried to figure out what the proper next step is. Uh, so there's a lot of conversation about, um, the board wanting to take over and everything else. The reality is, we are extremely, extremely concerned about just making sure that there's a transparent process for the ways that the, um, board is able to do that. Uh, and to trustee Steve's point about, um, having the, the conversations and dialogue, we really, really, uh, this meeting would be much more productive if it were had with all board members, and we could speak to one another in a respectful manner. It really would. We welcome anybody, that's why I started the meeting by saying, everybody's been invited and in attendance. I'm certain the administration has heard, we have one of our employees, grateful that you're here, James, who's come to videotape this event. But we wanna make sure that we have everybody present to have those discussions. Welcome trustee elect, trustee, I don't know if we say elect or reelect, because you know, you've been around a few times. But we do, we welcome, um, trustee elect Stanley Brown, and look forward to trying to have some of those conversations. I feel we've had some reasonable conversations in the pa- past, and I pray that, that, that direction continues, and I'm sure we will make, make those things work. Um, i- it's a lot of board versus mayor, board versus mayor. That's not the intention, that's not the desire. Uh, but I do say that we, um, insist that transparency be met, and that's why I continue to say, things do not have to be presented. You don't have to give me anything, you put it on the website, I'll gladly go and get it. I have a printer, I got a fax, I'll go to Kinko's, we can do whatever we need to, and we can have conversations, we can have the same conversation that we're having in this fashion. But I did wanna mention that as we're talking about, um, names on the bank accounts and all those things. If we follow the process, please, take me off the account. I gotta, okay, let me, let me get off of that. So, um, any additional comments on this topic?
Okay, and next, um, on the agenda, I, um, on the agenda, item D, uh, also trustee Belcher?
Um, this last one, and the reason that these are all discussion, as I said, but I do feel that at this point, sometimes we have to just, um, seek legal counsel outside of what's going on because you wanna make sure that, that we stood up here, we're doing what's right for people. And, um, when I say enforcing our process and contract, there's a lot of people in the community, outside the community, they may have businesses, businesses that may wanna do, um, business with the village. So they should have equal opportunity that if a project comes up, it goes out to bid, and people bid on it to be fair. Now, however the process is and whoever they pick. But it was a great concern when one of the vendors, uh, got up at a board meeting and said that we don't have a contract to go, and you've done over $300,000 worth of work. And when I spoke to legal counsel in reference to it, um, I said, "Well, if they sue us", he said, "It's probably gonna be hard, and now I probably gonna have to pay no more settlement because the work has been done." That's not fair to the people. It's not fair to the people if it's not approved. It's not fair to the people if it wasn't bought properly, the way it should be. It is not fair to other vendors that may have the same quality and skills to do the job and didn't even get a fair opportunity to do it because they knew nothing about it. So, um, I know, um, we talked about RFPs before, kinda went to the website because they haven't been done. But I just really feel that if we are trying to do stuff fairly and productively throughout the community, that should be something that we are implementing and making sure that we have contracts with these vendors. I even say, when I say contracts with the vendors, I even wanna say a contract with someone who we hired, and now they say they got a contract and we don't have a contract with them. So it's just, um, I don't think none of us come to sit here to bash anybody. We are really just trying to do the will of the people to make sure that we can pay the bills, that we can move forward, and get, that the community get what they deserve. I mean, there are some nice things that's coming, but there are more important things that's needed. So, yeah, it can look good to say we had this event, we had this party, but every time it rain, if my, um, basement is flooding, I don't care one thing about a party or barbecue or step set or anything else at that point. And I just think that we need to focus more on, uh, infrastructure and community things versus, uh, recreational. So, um, that's my comment in reference to the RFP process. We're making sure a contract for, uh, vendors for the municipality.
Um, any additional comments, any other board members?
I do. Um, just want to piggyback off of that. The roofing and windows vendor, um, was saying he wasn't compensated. Emails were sent to him on numerous occasions. Uh, "Do you have a contract? Do you have a contract? Do you have a contract?" He never responded back to the email with the contract, but he responded back with the invoices. That same vendor put several intent to lien on several res- residents' property. And then we came to the board meeting, come to find out, he didn't have a contract. A contract was never signed by the village. It was never approved by the board of trustees. Every vendor you have out here, I have not seen a contract from any of them. Not a one. Now, the other trustees, I haven't seen any. And like I said, the proper protocol, procedure, however you wanna say it, it comes before the board for approval, then you do the work. You're doing the work, and then I'm grandstanding when I don't approve it. I don't pay for anything I don't see. The board is here to legislate. That means the money comes in, you make sure it is spent the correct way. So I will not, and let me repeat, I will not pay for anything that I did not see or approve. And that's for the record. So again, I know I don't talk, but I'm talking now. Okay, thank you.
Amen, amen, amen. Uh, so, and then, uh, additional comment. Within our, um, purchasing policy and procedure, I know, I think I spoke with trustee Steve about this some time ago too. There actually is already a policy in place that, that dictates at what point in time RFPs should be, um, utilized. So $0 to $5,000 would not require RFP because we would, you know, be doing RFPs to purchase pens, which, uh, which doesn't make good business sense. Um, $5,000 to $10,000, you get quotes. But once it reaches the $20,000 threshold and above, um, the part, the policy dictates that we should have written formal RFPs, and those should be presented to the board. So I'm saying this to mean, in a lot of cases, we, uh, discuss things that we actually have the policies in place. The challenge that we consist, we continue to run into when we see the board is enforcement of the policies or willingness to discuss the proper way to do it. Um, and in a reasonable fashion and people working reasonably, we should be able to make a phone call, sit down, have a couple of emails, and discuss exactly what the policy is. And if the policy is improper, we can also work to change that. Uh, the challenge we're having here is, um, being dictated to what the policy, uh, uh, an ignorance of the policies, and the board insisting that we follow policy. Any additional comments, any other board members? Uh, trustee Norwood?
I think that the RFP process would help us eliminate a lot of the, the, our acts of transparency. It will help us get a better bang for our buck in regards to the work that we're doing now. We all want to make sure that we're not overpaying for services. So if we have our piece for this place, then now we have competitor bidding, and we need to ensure that things are being paid accordingly, and that we're not just paying everyone and overpaying. Um, another thing is, the RFP process would also help us with transparency. As we keep saying, uh, we don't have, we're never provided with any information. But if we have the RFPs presented, then the board would know the work that's being done. Not only will we have an idea before the work is being done, but we'll also know how much money is allocated for that work, and who's doing the work. Um, a big problem that we had when we did have our upper dispersment was that, because I know a lot of residents were calling and saying, "Well, hey, how, you know, why would you stop the windows and roofs? Or why would you stop these, um, services?" And the problem was not that we wanted to stop the services, we actually voted for the services so they can move forward. The problem was that we, the board, we'd, uh, vote on a certain amount. So let's just say we vote on $250,000 for windows and roofs. Well, we'll get our warrant list, and we're paying Bob $250,000 with his windows and roofs. Now we got John Company another $150,000, so we're way over the allocated amount. So that's a big problem with the spending. If we have RFPs, we'll know who's doing the work, what money is being allocated for the work, and as a village, we know what's being spent. And we won't have to keep coming up here asking questions or begging the administration. And we won't have to keep coming up here asking questions or begging the administration for information that we're, we should be privy to, or that we're entitled to, as a community and not just the board, as a resident. Thank you, Mia Prota.
Okay. Thank you very much, trustee Norwood. Any additional comments? Okay, hearing none on that. Were you looking for, were you looking for consensus on that, or was that a comment?
I'm looking for a consensus on the RFP process.
Consensus, okay. So asking for a consensus vote that we continue moving forward on the RFP process. Clark Key, please roll call.
So Belcher moves your motion in, you second?
I'll second. Well, I think it's a consensus, I don't know if we need, do we need a motion in a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me put me for a second.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee House?
Yes.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Steve?
Yes.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed for a consensus.
Okay, next we have on the agenda, was a discussion and consensus vote that I was asking that we move forward with the process for forensic audit. Some years back, the board had voted to pursue a forensic audit that never came to fruition. My desire on this, or the reason that it popped back into my mind, at this moment, annually, the Village of Dalton should have, should have an annual audit. Not a forensic, just an audit where they come and review the books. At this present time, we have not had an audit in more than two years. So since this administration has taken over, there has not been one audit that's been completed. The most recent audit that's been in the works for some time, from my last knowledge of it, I've seen a draft of it, and it never came into a final version status. That audit, if or when it does come, will be for the year ending April 30th of 2021, which is the last year of Riley Rogers' administration. So even if or when we do get an audit, it will only reflect through the end of Riley's, and then we have to start that process to get two more years. That's one concern I had that made me say, okay, what's another process? Because that, because we need to have our audits up to date and brought in regularly. Item two, the last financial report that we had is through December of 2022, the end of the calendar year, which is seven months into our fiscal year. That last report showed a deficit of five point eight million dollars in our general fund. That was reported, we discussed it, and of course, and we get the banter, the back and forth. However, that's the documented number I have. Since we began reporting these numbers during the committee reports and things like that, we have no longer received the information in terms of the monthly financials. So I have not received, and I have not received, the board has not received. I'll keep with my theme, it's not about the board, it has not been posted on the website. The community, to my knowledge, has not received any financial information. Please put it on the website, we'll pull it down from there. But that's five point eight. Now, my belief, my hope or belief, since that time, some property tax revenue came in, there's some sales tax revenue that generally comes in in the months of March. So my belief is, we're not in the five point eight million dollar deficit. But I'm certain we're still in a deficit, and if we compare year over year, what we did in December, we were at a five point eight million dollar deficit in December of '22, we compare that to 2021, there was a four hundred thousand dollar surplus. So if we just keep looking at the differences year over year, there's a major concern around where we're at financially. And then not providing this information to the community is another concern, that something, something's wrong. Something's uncomfortable. So I'm saying that, I would like to ask the board that we proceed with an RFP for a forensic audit. Of course, on the financials, but then I'll also ask the board if there's any other areas that they would seek, that we include in the RFP. If a consensus is reached, I will begin working with our attorneys to draft the RFP proposal, so that we can move that forward. But I'll yield the floor to anybody that has question or comment.
I would like to include the water department on that, for the forensic audit, for sure. Trustee Steve mentions the water department. Trustee Belcher mentions the housing department.
Can you say that, little?
The housing department.
Okay. Any additional comments or statements from the board members? Hearing none. I'll ask, I'm asking for the consensus vote, do we need to do a motion? Okay, I'll motion further. Motion, second by trustee Belcher.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee House?
Yes.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Steve?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, next on the agenda, approval of a resolution authorizing the payment of TIF expenses. So part of our redevelopment agreement that we have calls for the developer of the TIF. The TIF that we're speaking of is the Food for Less TIF, that, to receive payments. That vendor has sent in numerous requests for his payment, and those requests have not been responded to. He's, he's sent those requests into village administrator, the village attorneys. All of those requests have not been fulfilled. The vendor did also reach out to myself and I'm sure any other board members, and asked, can we, you know, are the board okay with approving the proper amount of development expenses? He also mentioned some of the development opportunities that we hope can be brought into the community. So we will be asking him to attend a subsidy with the trustees, so he can share some of that, because we do think there is development opportunity. Assuming that we, that we work together, and that's the, that's the major thing. But work together or not, I mean, we, I, or the board is adamant that we continue pushing forward processes that the residents know, we are making those efforts. This is something that is contractually owed to the vendor, so not doing it would, could and likely will lead to future litigation. And I think, and the vendor's efforts are trying to, trying to resolve something peaceably. If there's any reason that it shouldn't be, I would hope that the administrator, the village attorneys, would begin to respond and let us know that there's something improper. But as I look at a comparison annually, these, this is something that is standardly paid, has been paid for many, many years, and in this case, is just not being paid, or is being overlooked. So my motion would be approval of paying for, the approval of the resolution paying the TIF expenses.
Can you, can you explain what that developer is responsible for? Now, so, you know, Mike Rose, what is he, what type of development has he done that's responsible for? I think he owns Walgreens. Food for Less.
So this developer has been, has been part of, has worked in the community for more than 20 years. He's done negotiations with Walgreens to bring, to bring the Walgreens here, as well as keep the Walgreens here, because there was a time where Walgreens was considering leaving, but the developer lowered the rent in an amount fee to make it sustainable for us to maintain that Walgreens, so that, so we were able to continue to keep that. He was essentially a part of the Food for Less development, and has had other communications throughout the years. At one point in time, potentially would bring, to bring Chase Bank, Drive Thru, or Starbucks, those things did not come to fruition because of issues, issues during that time or previous. So that, those did not come to fruition. But however, the developer has done significant things in the community, and also has been working to secure additional development opportunities within the Village of Dalton.
Just for discussion purposes, it's sad that we have to go through this, but there are some TIF reimbursements that are being made. So it's kind of picking and choosing who's your friend and who's not your friend that's getting paid, which is a problem, because if we have developers that are looking to bring businesses into the community, this should be something that if they've been paid, and they're due this money out of the TIF, then it should be done. And the reason I say they're picking and choosing, because a warrant list that we did have, where Carter's Excavating and Renovation was on there, a TIF reimbursement money was paid for the cleanup of 300 West Sibley, which was reimbursed, because of course, that's a project that someone is pushing, pushing for. So if we're just gonna be fair, we should be fair across the board to pay everybody who are entitled to money out of the TIF. Also, in a conversation where there was some TIF money for repayment back to a general fund. So there, the money is in the TIF, is being utilized, but it's being picked, picked and choose of who's getting paid and who's not getting paid.
I'll expand a little. The TIF funds are restricted funds to be used for special purpose. So those purposes are outlined within the development agreement. So we couldn't, we could and should not be here seeking payment of, whether it's a party, a special initiative from the TIF funds, because that's not the purpose, and would lead to a lot of consequences. Here, what we, what we're discussing is paying something that's consistent with the TIF agreement. The items that trustee Belcher also mentioned were also part of the TIF agreement, and the board has always proceeded in accordance with any agreements that have been entered into. Whether voted for or not, once the agreement is made, we want to follow the letter of that to avoid additional litigation, just to come back to the conclusion, to follow what's in the agreement. So I think I made my motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee House?
Aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Steve?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Next we have on the agenda, approval of an ordinance, 2302 regarding Rules and Regulations for the foyer Process. My favorite clerk. Yeah, I will yield the floor to, would you like us to do a motion in second first, or you wanna?
I just want to explain what the ordinance is about.
All right, clerk.
Okay. So many of you are aware that we've had many challenges having foias answered. And we have several lawsuits pending because those foias are not being answered. So the purpose of this ordinance was to recognize the importance of transparency in the village affairs, and the mandatory requirement by the Freedom of Information Act, and the mandatory requirement imposed by the Freedom of Information Act. Meaning that we are a public entity, and that all of our information and documentation is public information and can be distributed to anyone who requests it. There are certain guidelines that are exempt, but very few. So the purpose of the rules or regulations in this ordinance is to ensure compliance with these mandatory requirements of the foyer, and to prevent unnecessary and avoidable offenses, expenses associated with the violations of the foias. It is simply to avoid the lawsuits as we are dealing with now. This policy will be given to each department head, so they understand the requirements under foyer, and also the consequences if you do not abide by answering foias. And I felt it very necessary to put an ordinance in place, so now this is a law. This is not just a public acknowledgement, but this is therefore a law in the Village of Dalton that you must respond to foias if it's in reference to the department that you oversee. So I am requesting the board's approval on this today. And if anyone likes a motion, in second?
I'd like to motion to approve the ordinance, 2302 regarding the Rules and Regulations for the foyer Process.
I'll second.
Okay, hearing a motion and second, any discussion?
I'm sorry. Go on.
Any, any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion on this item. I'll ask Clark Key, please roll call.
Sure. Trustee Brown? Trustee House?
Aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Steve?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Thank you, board, for approving this ordinance.
Our pleasure. Okay. Last and most, public comment. So we'll ask any individuals, if they can, just please, if I show, hand raise, stand up and project, I will try to get an order. We'll answer what we can, if the comments are a little bit lengthy, or we'll ask that we discuss afterwards. I'm gonna go from front to back. So with Hart in this row here, with Ms. Seale, please come.
I have to say, and I wouldn't laugh for a lot, I came here, had so many thoughts, and wanted to give you all the right hate and thoughts, but I didn't want to entertain, because as each one of you are standing your own way, we now need you all to do the people's work. Because I'm not gonna keep watching a lot of things anymore, is why I came the way I did today. And as some of you all have said, the body of food consists of everybody that got elected and have their seats sitting here. It can no longer be a picking and choosing, because everybody's gotta comply. So when I say I represent not only the people of Dalton, being a human right activist, I will, I will represent elected officials. I will acknowledge when they're doing their job, I will also recommend them when they're not doing their job. Because like the check and balance that everybody's talking about, it must be that way. I've been here a long time, so to you all, you all are, I've been, this is my sixth mayor. So I can't even tell y'all how many trustees. But the truth of the matter is, when I come to each one of you all, I say today, on public record and in front of all these people, I came because that's my way since I've been here. I'm starting that you all had to figure out if I was coming for the crap that you all have had to deal with, and that people have had to see. But I always come for the people's work. I bring nothing, because when it come to personal, look, the jobs I've had here, that's all they could pay me for. I would sit there, I throw these hands up, I wouldn't throw them up for that. That's why I threw them up, to be a human right activist, because I can advocate for the community of the whole. But today, I am conveying my appreciation, because this is what it's gonna take to take care of these people's business. If you all just keep that in mind, you all will rise past everything, because that's the vein of sending that seed. You take care of their business, and you're gonna run to conflicts. But if you don't entertain them, it don't interfere with you doing your job. If you don't lean into it, it can interfere. So today, and this is a rare, I've never been loud, so the reason I'm turning my camera here is so some people can see. It's true to nature, no one has to conform. If you do the right appropriate thing with your free will, and you are aware of where you are placed, then you are only not obligated to that, because it came with the territory. But the day after your job, I can give me some releases like this, I'm not trying to do two, three meetings in Dalton. When there is, to the public truth, there's only one place that our meetings are supposed to take place. And for the people, this is what they did to ensure that you all knew what was going on. But I hope we continue to have our meetings at the place that it is deemed for, which is our Hall of Fame, the elected officials' Hall. And thank y'all very much this, oh, I do want to announce, we lost a resident, he was a young man. And I want his name spoken, because I was a teacher. This is crossing yard, his name is dead. And all I want everybody to know is we can't not acknowledge the children in our community anymore. From this day forth, our children must be acknowledged. When the unfortunate he happened, it must be acknowledged. We may not want to deal with it, but there are some families, they deserve to have that. We lost two crossing yards, and I am hurt today. That because of all this decision that you all need to speak about, they didn't get the proper recognition in their depths for as long as I've known that they worked here. So I ask you all to try your very best to be peace makers. You can't lose, you will get more people to come behind you. But this is, this, this age, old minutes, and we are in a dire time, at that thirty three point two, that is not a joke. That has really devastated Dalton. So we can't keep pretending that those things don't affect us. All this money no one wants to pay out and take care of, people are gone, you all gotta realize, that is the demise of the community. When those very things cannot be taken care of with the elected people that are here and the ones that are coming, that brings the demise of the community. I thank y'all one and all.
Just for clarification, when people do say we didn't acknowledge somebody, or, if we don't know, we can't acknowledge. We, when we find out, our residents. But I'm just saying, when we find out.
About residents in the community, if they lost someone, lost a family member. Most of us try our best to reach out to them, give, offer our condolences or something. Because the communication of the administration and the current board of trustees is so bad at this point, we don't get any type of information unless it's come about one day we go to court. So.
And if I can say that, if I can say that, she is right, because I came into the, I came into the office, because see, the vein of me has been the people since I've been here. I can tell you, the children, the grandparents, all, and that's part of being elected officials, sometimes you just have to step out there and just get, got to walk through the community. I mean, I ain't saying we all gonna love it, but sometime I I mean, I ain't saying we all gonna love it, but sometime, I say this sometime, I gotta see it, but why don't everybody else walk out there and see it? Because it is out there, so once again, I thank you all as I did.
Thank you, Ms. Seale.
This is gonna get the people back, better back to y'all.
Any, uh, anybody else from the row?
Hi, I have to step away for a while, but I want to commend each and every one of you all for putting yourselves in a position to represent us in a manner of what I have done to, to the trustees because people were not getting answers, they were not understanding what was going on because our communication stopped. Need the rest. I have been with you from day one. You know, you know, you know, you know, you know, especially to you, trusty Steve, I want to publicly thank you for everything that you did for the people.
Yes, ma'am.
For the residents. Unfortunately, I'm one of those that could not come to the bills anymore because I couldn't take it. I have a temper and I see what's going on. If somebody doesn't give you the information, how are you supposed to get it? If someone says, don't give them anything and they treat you all, and we are all saying, I, I just don't understand why we're where we are today. But if you don't get the information, then you can't do anything. Your hands are tied. You certainly can't go gangster all the way, so you want to do, you know, you have to lay down your professional business. And so I just wanna say thank you very much for representing me, because I can only speak for myself and my family, to your best ability. And I hope as the new administration on the board, that you can represent the people and not just resist. And that's all I have to say.
I wanna dive a little more question today because I, I didn't, I acknowledge that you trustees, uh, can't have to say, man, I wanna rethink trustee Edward Steve for his four years today. We have one row by row, so I'm gonna ask anybody that's in the front row, um, hearing none, anybody in the second row, it was raining.
I have a concern, and I know, um, at this point, when you all talking about the bills, my concern is when I look at my property tax bill, it's telling me that I got almost twenty-four thousand dollars of debt that's attached to my house. And then, um, she also mentioned about this thirty-three point five million dollar lawsuit. That's gonna break down the act of my house also in, in the future.
Okay, so two parts I wanna, I'm gonna tackle, thirty-three million, I'm gonna expand on that because it's, um, I think, uh, thank you for the question, because it's very important that we all discuss this openly, and I think that's why it's important that we have board meetings because those are significant concerns. On the property tax bill, um, I would, I would say-
We would work to partner with the, one of the county assessors, either Larry Rogers Jr. or Cassandra Holbrook does, uh, great work as well, so that they can go over the tax bill and make sure you're getting the proper assessed, properly assessed amount, um, because that seems like a very high amount, that there may be more to it. So we'll make sure we get you in touch for that.
But it's saying that the debt, the Dalton debt is attached to each one of our homes.
Okay, now to the, the, oh, okay, understood. The thirty-two, the thirty-three million dollar, um, lawsuit recently went into, uh, so the judgment, the verdict came out, a month later, then we went back into court of, and were seeking an appeal or a new trial. The judge denied the new trial because there were some grounds. Now, some of the grounds they agreed with, some they didn't. Ultimately, the judge denied the new trial, keeping the thirty-three point two million dollar, thir, dollars intact. The Village of Dalton has one month within which to file for an appeal. Uh, we, I and other, I think it was other board members have also spoken with our, our attorney, the legislative attorney, as well as the attorney for the prosecuting attorney, Delgado, because we wanna make sure that that appeal is filed timely and the, and neither of them are representing the village at this time. The insurance company selects the attorney for this case and they're handling the appeal as well because this is an insurance matter. From the village's standpoint, we have, there are no, there has not been a binding commitment that we must pay the thirty-three point two million at this time. But the thirty-three point two million is real. We have to file an appeal for all appealable grounds, route one. Route two, this board of trustees have authorized settlement with the insurance, through the insurance companies prior to the case, um, reaching a verdict and which the settlement would have happened at a lower amount. So without trying to go much into the exact details, because I don't wanna, I don't want the attorneys to call me, but the board does have another cause of action against our insurance companies for not settling as directed. So we have a route with an appeal and we also have a potent, uh, potential malpractice claim with our insurance company. Uh, so we have to continue to monitor it. We need to make sure we update the residents on the status of it. Um, I'm of the belief that we will make sure we do all the proper things so that the Village of Dalton is not saddled with the, with an amount that we can't afford, and we have to monitor the case and keep giving updates to move forward.
Okay, will you all increase the ten thousand to the ten million dollars, you showing piles, can you increase that?
Will we increase? So last year, we would like to. Uh, when we're looking at the caps, we have two policies right now. We have our liability policy and the police policies, which would have a six million dollar cap, and we have an umbrella policy, an additional five million dollars. So when they're saying ten, it's, it's between ten and a half, eleven million dollars. Um, in order to get a higher limit, the insurance companies also have to approve that. Last year when we came to, uh, and I say approve it, be willing to offer it because they have to look at everything as a risk assessment too. Last year, it took until the cl, the final few days to get an insurance company that would quote, that would quote an eleven million dollar cap. That does not mean that we won't get it this year, we're gonna push for as much as possible, um, as well to try to make sure that we are solvent. Uh, but then we also have to see, of course, a higher, a higher cap means a higher premium. So those are all the things that we have to get the information, share with the community because our, our last budget, I wanna say we were at about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the year on our, on our insurance policies collectively. And that's with the ten million dollar cap. So if we go up to thirty million dollars, uh, we have to see what that looks like as well. But yes, all things will be considered, we will certainly ask for policies that will cover us up to the amounts that we feel ne, necessary, and we lean too on the insurance professionals to kinda have a gauge for what, uh, payouts look like. Uh, it's been reported many times, this is probably, this, I believe I saw the report that this is the largest verdict that was issued in a police matter.
Yes, it was.
So when we're talking, uh, do we wanna get a limit of, of a policy that'll cover us up to fifty million, up to sixty million in the event of a catastrophe? Uh, so there, there's a lot of different moving parts. I think it's important that we have these meetings, I think it's important that we hear from residents as well, that we can share what our fiscal realities are because we get the information, we do our best to share it, but then we also want the resident feedback. That's why committee of the whole and what, um, trustee Belcher was doing today in terms of saying, I wanna have these things for discussion so that the board is not taking action without getting feedback from the community. So all those things are gonna be critically important and we will continue to communicate and get feedback from everybody in here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm staying on the second row right now.
I have one question, speaking to, you mentioned the inability to get those in the financial, uh, aspect of the administration to come and ask the simple questions. To that, does the trustees have bylaws and policy procedures set up?
Yes.
Where you can summons, those people knows?
Uh, so to answer, uh, yes, there are policies and that's some of the things we were discussing tonight. There's policies, there's bylaws, there's ordinances. The challenges that we're work, running into right now is enforcement of what's in the, on the books. So we have those things, if those things are not, are violated, then the next phase is going into litigation and into court. And that's why we have so many different, um, that's why there are so many different pending, uh, litigations that are happening. Um, as the board, some of the things we have to, again, we have to make the decision, when we feel that something's being violated, is it egregious enough that we go into court? Because all that's doing is, is adding more of a burden onto the village. So, but then when it gets too outrageous, where we feel like it's going, um, it's more beneficial to the, to the community that we do litigation versus following the process, then we move forward. So I'm, I'm gonna come to you again for the questions, yeah, we ain't going nowhere. But the, um, one area, because we do talk about the cost of the legislative council. Right now, our legislative council has cost us three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for all the different cases, the involvement that they've had on different matters. If we look at every mon, every month, we come to our warrant lists and items are being held off because they haven't been in our budget. That's one point seven million dollars worth of items being held, but it cost us three hundred thousand dollars to accomplish that. And that's the way as a board, we have to look at it. So there are some things where we may get calls and residents say, well, why don't you go into court? Even in something as simple as today, where we're talking about the bills. Well, we can go into court and ask for the bills, but now we have to pay an attorney to do that just for us to be able to pay the bills. Is that the most prudent way or do we need to, or do we try to get, uh, answer and find out when those bills are gonna be presented, when we're able to properly pay on them? So that's the, some of the debates we have. Uh, I know you had a follow-up question.
Uh, two-part question. And I agree with you, waste time and money fighting something as simple as our reading bylaws. So it's a two-part question. One, you have what's called a judicial hearing, you don't have to go through court and court for lawyers. And if that's not in your bylaws, you guys can sit on board and create that, the bylaws, so that when there ends a question before dispute, when there's a question or dispute like this, it doesn't waste time and money in court. It's called administrative hearing or judicial, uh, not judicial, administrative hearing. Uh, justice, if y'all give that bylaw into your, or create that bylaw into your policy and procedure, in the future, you eliminate all this question. You get one person to hear, you make that judicial, uh, decision, and it has to be a binding bylaw. You guys need attorney, you get ten.
Okay.
So that says taxpayers' money, that says all this back and forth with court. I mean, Trump got us tied up in court for twenty, thirty years, with stuff he doing, he don't gonna dawn and be tied up and stuff like that. Let's get this hearing before judge, let's get a, a, an answer and a decision, and move this city forward.
Received, I, I'll do more follow-up, because we've had discussions with our attorney trying to seek the fastest way. Um, he's advised us the way we're going. I'm not gonna say it's not because they don't wanna, I would pray they're not trying to line their pockets so they gonna get paid anyway. But, uh, but on due diligence, I'll follow up and make sure I have some response.
Have you ever had a contract or anything, they say, if they're, if you sue, you made your right to go to court, you have to have it before, that's the same thing here.
I receive. Okay, hey, do you have an additional comment or a question?
That's it, and I, I, I came here, you know, just to hear what's going on, I'm gonna excuse myself, excuse me everybody, I'm talking literally out here.
Okay, thank, thank you for coming and your comment.
My name is Kerry Pitts. No, ma'am, I grew up with Thornbridge High School right here in the eighties, uh, but I'm a distributor, I'm an entrepreneur, and I got a lot of money coming to Dalton, and I'm concerned about my money.
Yes, sir.
In this community.
Thank you, thank you.
That I look like this, but I got money in this place.
All right.
If you, if, Mr. Brown, you can get in touch with me, if you need anything from me.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. All right, and Beth, we're gonna row by row, so we'll, but we're gonna get you back there too. Um, second row. I'm on second row, then we're coming to third. Any comments? Okay, hearing none, third row, Mr. Lee?
I got a couple of specific questions to resolve, related to something we've been talking about, or instance, focus or arguing that there. I wanna ask, can somehow the state of Illinois, old rule of the Oklahoma State, but at some point, cannot the state of Illinois step in in some capacity and address the fact that right now, by having, bearing presence here, the open, you know, open meetings actually being violated? Right now, we shouldn't have to be here, okay? We're being citizens of, of Dalton, the other elected officials of Dalton, are being denied use of our taxpayer funding facilities by, on, on the capricious plans of an individual that obviously doesn't seem to understand or, or give them what our rights are and what our rights should be. I'm just wrong, you know, I'm not in Dalton, I, I don't know what to kind of, frankly, I have nothing to say. There's something, somebody needs to step in and deal with this. You have to go, you're gonna have to go, I hate to do this, but you're gonna have to put that Oklahoma State for a minute and have somebody come in and, uh, listen to what I'm, what I was in this situation, but it's getting beyond ridiculous. And I do understand, you know, what you all are up against, but I don't know what's up to the citizens, to make war, or, or all of this, where we are being stepped all over. And we've been disrespecting, and we've been ignoring. This is my tax money, these people are out here serving a chip and this, so forth with it, okay?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and I know you've made some, uh, breaches, uh, state's attorney's office, um, of all, all of the meetings, attorney general, I don't know what the fact is because that's another responsibility. Uh, the board, we've all made, um, collective outrages, asking for intervention, um, and enforcement as well.
And we have to continue, and I think to your point, uh, it takes, it's gonna, it takes all of us.
And I would like to ask, what are the real world ramifications of Dalton, of possibly getting there, brother? What would happen? Because I, I heard, I agree that Dalton, my judge, I just thought so. So this is something, this is something that's a possible reality, I mean, I don't forget that. I understand what happens in some cities, in some cities, where I said, you know, if you can't even consider that all that, the state of this, which I know we don't necessarily want, but at some point, you're gonna have to deal with our financial obligations. And if there is such a thing that, that bank goes into a public, you're gonna see, we're gonna need a group, and how to deal with that.
Yes. Um, and a lot of those, a couple of different things that could happen in a bankrupting situation, bringing, but, uh, a couple of things we, we, we could look at receivership, where-
Decisions being made are no longer being done by the board or the mayor, our community does not have that right to access the people individually, but a lot of those things will be driven through a court process. Uh, so the court will take a collective look at all the finances of the village, all of the outstanding debts, and make the, make a determination as to what the proper way for the village to handle that is and who should be the people in place to administer those things. Uh, no, I can't give you a firm because we're, yeah, we're, we're too, yeah, it's too fresh, it's too new. I will say I do not expect that we're gonna come in that position. Yes, I'm sorry?
It has happened before.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because Michigan.
Yes.
We're not infrastructure, I'm feeling what it is. Now, I know all of us are worried, we have infinite water main breaks. Uh, I know the information, you know, over the last few months, but I mean, how many water main break you've had? And I also know, I know each one of the costs, and also, but I do know this, that is a precursor to collapse of the system. You can't keep busting the pipe here, busting the pipe here, busting the pipe here, busting the pipe here. Pretty soon, then flood will be here and there, but now, we're being warned, we don't want to be in this position with the foot of Michigan and, uh, Mississippi, Jackson, Mississippi, we're in. I mean, this is going on for years, so I don't know if you guys have, I know you all have the dollar numbers, but do you have a, a, a number of the, the amount of water main breaks we have in the last year? Do you have a number of that?
We can get that exact number, I don't have it, I don't have it, but yes, we, yes, we can get that.
But it might be something you wanna look at because, uh, start taking the pulse and start sacking up, something about, uh-
Yes, sir. Okay, we're gonna go, Miss Price, and then I'm coming to the, to the left.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm just so concerned and I hope every person at home, you know, you have to come out of your house and stop and sound. We're tired of looking at the skits and the videos when we come to our board, we be tired of listening to disrespectful DJ music, uh, the DJ last time played, bitch better have my money, excuse me, it's a baby, I'm sorry. We, we have been disrespected. We, we have been disrespected as a community. We deserve that. And you guys gotta come out your house and do not be impressed with a ice cream and a basketball court. We have things that need to be handled before our ice cream is even put in place. I think it's a shame that the trustees do not know about, we have too much overtime in the village of Long Island. They don't even know about overtime. They don't know how much their employees are making. That should not be happening. This village has been down to the ground, down all the way to the ground, and I'm just so happy to see all these faces here, because usually when we go to the meeting, you have the skits and the Nino Brown, New Jack City, what type of stuff is that? Why would you represent yourself like that as a man? That is so disrespectful. This is not New Jack City, this is Long Island, and we should be proud. And I pray, I pray that Mr. Brown will do the right thing, and I'd be like Mr. Trustee Holmes, and just go along. And I pray, I pray for that.
Mm-hmm.
And we need to know what's going on with the finances. We got a gentleman that's watching the ice cream, he's getting paid big money to just watch a ice cream. We are not that type of people, and we would just face the ice cream. Why would she think somebody would go over there and disface them, build the ice cream? We're not like that. We're spending so much money for somebody to guard the ice cream. We don't even have the protection of our police department. We're missing some, and then they're telling us we have to, we have to read our own water meter for our, what type of stuff is that? We gotta stop the parties and take care of the business at hand, as our beautiful mayor helps us. We gotta take care of the business. I shouldn't have to read my own meter. I shouldn't have that. We should have background checks, checks, and don't. Any job, decent job, we have a background check. We just don't hire anybody to come into our house. What about our water? Now they're saying that our water is bad. So, don't get impressed with these shiny objects that's put in front of you, and they were making you guys scared about the windows program. That gentleman that she was dealing with has been indicted. He's a criminal. So, what was going on? Background deals? That's what was going on, the kickbacks. That's why it's no, no contracts, 'cause it's some kickback that's going on. So, don't, you know, you all, I'm proud of you all stepping down, and y'all continue, because all these other big villages, Tilly Park, they would not, they would not stand for this disrespect. And I've been here, I was here doing the Shaw days. This village had went down to the ground, they had, and they wanted to put everything on Rogers back, they did. And Mr. Brown, I've seen him in, in action when he was a trustee, he did RFPs, he, he wasn't standing for it. They, they, they did everything possible to, to, you know, go against Rogers. So, I just pray that Mr. Brown, I hope he do the best that he can, that you be a decent, outstanding man, and you don't have to home syndrome, and just sit there, and just don't, don't worry about, don't worry about the money. I hope he's not that type of man, and he was the same man he was when he used to be a trustee, when he really cared about the money and what's being spent. I hope he can be that, Mr. Brown, and I'm trying to respect you, I hope he do the right thing, but if you don't, it really don't matter, you still have control.
I'd like to say on that, give you a chance to work for me.
I know, I, I'm gonna give it to you, but you can't sit up there like homes, man. I don't know how you want. He was looking at Chicago and stuff when he up there. He ain't thinking about Long Island.
He told me I did pretty decent work.
Oh, you, you was doing your thing, but I hope you don't mind, because I know you close with the mayor, and I just hope you don't go with that narrative.
I'm gonna say that, Steve.
Well, you know what? I just call it that, you know, like I think, because we're not giving service right. My neighbor got a water bill for over a thousand dollars, and it's just on her husband in her house. And he told her, you gotta reach your own meter. What type of mess is that you gonna tell us? We gotta read our lease, now we gotta do y'all job, right? Come on, stay, you know it ain't right. Deep down in your heart, you know what's down, I'm really not right. You know it ain't right. You know, especially be on a, uh, website, so the residents can see it, transparency. Then you don't have to worry about all they lying. It's out there for everybody. And then, I'm gonna say one thing, the residents got to speak up and stand up, because you, these people with these houses, especially the seniors, you gonna mess around and lose your homes, because see, we gonna have to have some deep conversations after this school clear. Some genes gonna have to grow up. So, y'all can get mad at, at the new president that's gonna be over us, and the trustees, they even took us into that lane where the water bills is gonna go up, your taxes, because we got all these lawsuits. It's gonna go up, we gonna have to eat it, but I will not eat that or take a tax hike as long as she there. I'm not gonna do that. So, deny everybody, I just have to say that.
All right, we're gonna miss some mirrors.
Yeah, thank you. I literally hadn't planned on saying, I didn't think, really, I was gonna be quiet, but I have to say this, I appreciate all of the trustees, particularly, we are the ones that are here, because they have really worked for the residents, even as, I'm sorry, I'm gonna change, but, okay. They have really worked for the residents of Long Island, they're concerned. We are family here, and we have passed out the word to help the trustees out, to tell our neighbors, come to these meetings, come to these meetings. I understand what happens, uh, down at the village. I can't even go to those meetings, 'cause it's disrespectful to them, and, and has been disrespectful to all of the trustees, and in particular, and also, tan, it was degrading. And once it is, we have to work as a community all together. We have to support the trustees, but we have to get out and help them as well. So, that's all I'm gonna say, you are completely done.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe. Right, right next to you. Okay. All right. We're gonna go all the way back, and we're gonna-
I'll be the last person.
Okay.
I'm in, I'm a thirty-five-year resident here, and I just wanna say that I am grateful to you for calling this special meeting to keep us abreast of what's going on, because we really have no other recourse, you know, we don't, there are no meetings that I was wanting to meet on a regular basis, and then they've been nice, and when you did get to a meeting, you weren't allowed to stand up and force your opinion, or even object to anything that was going on. So, I want you to know that I'm truly grateful for this special meeting, and each time you have one, I will be on the team, and trying to help, and do anything that I can to help to do it, y'all to move forward.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. All right, girl.
You know, I did have part of it to say, but it looks like it's all, you know, great, appreciate that. Bottom line, you guys were elected, protect our finances, you're doing a great job. Bottom line with me is that I'm glad you are not yes men. That's it. That's the reason why I'm hanging my bread now, because if you just be yes men, okay? I applaud you.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I have a question, uh, first about the credit card. Is there a, uh, limit, or maximum, or whatever, on this credit card?
Yes, fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. After the fifty, why is it that it's always a hundred or whatever? 'Cause if we have a credit card, they won't pay, I mean, they're blocking a counselor to do whatever. Well, we can use, when I say we, the, do it out of a credit card. So, why is it that we get a bill, I mean, a credit, uh, a statement, fifty, a hundred, whatever, unlimited?
Well, no, the, uh, credit card has a fifty thousand dollar max. It's set up on automatic payments, so it, every month it renews. I have not seen a bill that's gone over fifty thousand, oh, see if any other board member's all different. So, we haven't had any credit card statements that have gone over fifty thousand. However, at the end of the month, it's automatically deducted, and that fifty thousand is replenished to go, to be available to reuse.
Okay, now, we have an attorney. Uh, why is it that this attorney cannot go, let me go back? Address, we have been talking about putting a limit on this credit card. Why is, why have we not put a limit on this credit card?
So, the board of the February sixth special meeting, put an ordinance in place to reduce the limit. It is actually-
In court right now. Uh, with the court process, there have been several continuances and other motions that have been heard, so until the court case reaches its conclusion, there will not, there's no enforcement that'll happen on the, on the card limit. But we do, we have, through our attorney, been in court with the limits that have been requested.
So, we have to go through court process and care?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to say something to the residents, to us. Now, the trustees are doing whatever, whatever. The other thing is, they're telling us that, um, they have gone to court, or they go through listings and see what makes sense, or what, where we get the best benefit, just like, uh, I think trustee Y'all said. If we got something, some hundred thousand, it's gonna cost us three hundred thousand, whatever, that's not a good thing for us, maybe, to go to court. I'd like to appeal to us residents, we are all residents, we've got representatives. Why can't we send our emails? We got all these cute phones and computers and all of this. Send information, send, uh, uh, emails, send texts, or whatever. Maybe not each one of us every day, but let's say our representatives get bombarded, their text messages, their phones getting blocked up, their computers getting blocked up, or whatever. For us sending in information, or what, not information, but appeal is that somebody's got to help us.
Yes.
Somebody's got, and somebody's got to listen. Now, when it comes to our representatives, they come out here and talk and whatever, and get our votes, and, and whatever, whatever. But why is it when we get in trouble and we need somebody, a high power, or whatever, I use that term, to help us? Then we need to be locking up their phones, locking up their computers, locking up their mailboxes, or whatever we need to do, to get somebody to listen to us. And 'cause since I, every time we go to court, oh, why not? Why is it every court case gets denied? And we sitting here telling them that this person that's in charge is in violation? And it's no secret. I mean, we not hiding, anybody can come and see that the trustees are not getting compass of the bills well like they're supposed to. It's no secret. So, something needs to be done, and I would say, we need to contact our representatives, 'cause they come to us when they want something. Now, we need to go to them, 'cause we need something. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay? Great. Beth? Good. This gentleman.
Thank you.
Miss Pat.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure how the wonderful basketball courts on Greenwood Avenue got paid for, Polygaunt Fund and all that, but we have them, it looks nice, they're always behind. And, uh, you know, my basketball playing days are over, so I'm sure there's a lot of children in the area that would love to use those courts, but it's always locked. I don't understand the logic of having these courts that people aren't using.
Well, I would say, I, 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 I used to play basketball, I love basketball. I think those courts are gorgeous. However, uh, the big, the things that we do talk about is making sure that we get community engagement before the projects are coming, so we can kinda get feedback from residents. What are the hours gonna be? When will it be available? How do we make sure we all use it safely? I think tho, those are the conversations that did not, and how is it gonna be paid for, um, to your point. Uh, we were told at the time that there were donations, we have not seen evidence that there were enough donations to pay for the court. Uh, that does not mean that the board would or would not, I can't speculate, uh, having paid for it, uh, but we do wanna make sure that we have the information on the front end, and residents can say, yes, that's something we want. A lot of the ideas that we hear, um, surface level sound good, but we have to consider what are the alternatives with the money, and that's how we end up with a five-point-eight million dollar deficit. So, we have a lot of, uh, window dressing, but we wanna make sure we're getting kinda to the core of some of the matters, and make sure that the residents are weighing in, most importantly, before we make these decisions to move forward. In many cases, it's, uh, i- it's putting the cart before the horse, moving so quickly, and we haven't had the discussions on, is this the best way to use the money? Um, so, I, I know that was a little bit of a rant, I don't think there was a answer specifically to your call, and I'm sorry to say I don't have a specific answer, but, um, no, I'm in agreement, we wanna make sure we do communicate as much as possible. Okay. Now, um, why is it not open? Yeah, in terms of it being open, I would suggest going to Village Hall and, um, trying to get some, ask the questions, or coming to some of the, our regular board meetings. The hours are set by the village administrator and the administration, the mayor's office, and working collectively, so they would have to kinda give more input or feedback on what the plan is on a move forward. Okay? We're getting close to you, Beth.
I'm good.
Hey, Miss Pat. No.
You know what? I'm so sorry for being late, but she made, uh, a good point, and that's what I'm gonna bring up. Even though if we don't email, it need to be at least twenty of us go downtown to the dirt and building. We need to, just like they marching downtown, stop all of that, we need to get together and go. A lot of us don't do email, and it's a shame we don't have a pool. You know, we don't have a health club anymore. I mean, we, 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 I'm paying taxes. If a person not paying tax, I don't, what do they care? So, we need to go downtown and get to, at least it'd be twenty of us, and go down there and just say, listen, we ain't going nowhere until you get this straight. And trust me, it will work. I done turned some, some tables at Midway and O'Hare with my mouth. Come on, and I brought up, and we always, that little woman, she always, whoa, 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 she got that done. See, we, we can't just sit here and think that they can do, they can't do it, they hands are tied. We the ones paying tax. We don't have no health club, we don't have this, we can't do that. And I know, I don't know how to twerk, 'cause that's what the thing is, the skating, the twerking. I don't twerk. See, when you, when you talk about a skating rink, that's because you wanna ease in and have a party there, and have your friends down the pool. We don't need that. I've been out here since nineteen seventy-seven, we, we closed up Mr. Ricky's, and Newman's, and all of that. And my, I was able to raise my kids and my grandkids, and they not in jail, but this mess going on now, anybody raising their kids on this, in this mess, they might be going and getting their kids out of jail, because it's not, it's not, and all this arguing and different and stuff, these kids, see all that, guess they said, well, I can do the same thing. But we need at least twenty people in our gang who everyone go with. We go downtown to the dirt and building, I, I guarantee we gonna turn some heads. And that's true.
That's right.
There you go.
Yeah, that's right. We'll see, um, yeah, we'll, thank you, Ms. Pat. Okay. Um, we're going to the next row back. No comments? Beth!
So many great things have been said tonight, and I, I've always been, um, something that's surface for me, and that is to pass this, Village Hall is really owned by the people. My proposal is that we have the keys to the door, not the mayor and the administration, because of the way that the mayor and the administration have been doing things, we should have the keys. And when they, the door gets opened, you get the reminder or screen, they open up the door. Also, what needs to occur is the court needs to have ready access to her office. Jason House needs ready access, anytime he has questions about the county or the chef or he needs to be able to get in that door. We should not be in this building, we shouldn't have had this meeting in Village Hall, there should be no question, due to the fact that we couldn't be in that room with this meeting. Due to the fact that we couldn't be in that room with this meeting proves it. I say, find out who owns the building and take away the keys. The only way the mayor gets in is when we open the door.
Thank, thank you very much, Beth. Um, trustee Steve has a comment, then we're gonna motion that we.
I do, I do wanna remind everybody that, that the stuff that we, the trustees are doing, because we put the ordinance in place. Like, I like the way Phil, Mr. Phil, I understand, they were hard on RFPs, you gotta listen to your board, you gotta do this. They, they took the higher ground away, and yet followed it. The difference is, we got to say ordinance in place, but that may have followed the ordinances, this administration doesn't. So that's why you didn't go in court. We got all this ordinances in place to kinda keep restraining, to edge acts and balances, but it's not being followed.
You all even cut the overtime, remember y'all cut overtime?
But it's, it's just not being followed, so that's, that's why I say that, that's why we in court, 'cause if the ordinances were followed, we wouldn't have to go to court. And then once it's trust there, then we can, we can relax the ordinances and let you do what you do, let's run the city, but that's where it end.
Thank you for that, I do wanna acknowledge trustee elect, uh, Brown, I know it's not a, it might not have been the, the friendliest room, or the most, uh, pleasant thing that he thought saw on his agenda today, but I do wanna acknowledge you, uh, for coming, um, and being, and being available to listen to community and residents, things like that. Um, so having said that, any additional, oh, whoop, I think we went through it, I'm gonna motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion in second, uh, that's clerk Key, please roll call.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee House.
Aye.
Trustee Norwood.
Aye.
Trustee Steve.
Aye.
Uh, trustee Belcher has left. Um, meeting adjourned at eight twenty-six P.M.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.